Is he ready? Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Twenty-nine Palms City Council Virtual Regular Meeting Agenda at 6136 Adobe Road in the beautiful city of Twenty-nine Palms, California. I must read this safety alert. As a result of the COVID-19 virus and resulting orders and directions from the President of the United States, the Governor of the State of California, and the San Bernardino County Healthcare Agency, as well as the City of Twenty-nine Palms, proclamation that public will not be permitted to physically attend the Twenty-nine Palms City Council meeting to which this agenda applies. You may submit comments on any agenda item or on any item not on the agenda in writing via mail to City Council 6136 Adobe Road, Twenty-nine Palms, California, or by email to info@29palms.org. You may view the meeting live online on the City of Twenty-nine Palms website. Please note that the City Council is making every effort to follow the spirit and intent of the Brown Act and other applicable laws regulating the conduct of public meetings in order to maximize transparency and public access. It would be appreciated if communications of public comments related to items on the agenda or items not on the agenda are provided to info@29palms.org prior to the commencement of the meeting. If, okay, if that is not possible and to accommodate comments to items that may be added to the agenda after its initial hosting during this time of emergency, every effort will be made to attempt to review emails during the course of the meeting. Towards the end, the mayor will endeavor to make, take a brief pause before action is taken on any agenda item to allow the clerk to review emails and share any public comments received during the meeting. Call this meeting opened and can we have, where's the, Cindy, would you like to lead us in the pledge?
Please raise your hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, free, justice for all.
Thank you. There's no, do you know who this is?
Uh huh.
Marjorie Smith of the San Bernardino County VOAD MB COAD.
Kind heavenly fathers, we are bow our heads humbly at the start of the city council meeting and ask that thy spirit be with them. May they have the strength, energy, leadership skills, and courage to go forward during these turbulent times. Soften their hearts so they can hear the quiet little voice that can lead them on the right path and help them make good decisions. Grant them the patience and the calm that it will take to keep this city safe. Guide them to those in despair. Provide comfort to those in need. Bless their families and friends with love as they are separated from them. Bless their families who are close so they may spend meaningful time together. We offer this earnestness and sincere prayer in the name of your son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call.
Councilmember Ogilvy.
Present.
Councilmember Wright.
Here.
Councilmember Bildering.
Here.
Mayor Proton Mints.
Here.
Mayor Klink.
Here.
All present.
Roll call session announcements. There was no, nothing to report out of closed session. Do we have any changes to the agenda? Okay, we'll move, we'll come back to it. These proceedings may be viewed on demand on the City of Twenty-nine Palms website at www.29palms.org. You may also livestream this meeting by going to the, on the city website and clicking on the meeting agendas link. Is there any changes to the agenda?
No changes to the agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Those who are dialing in on go-to meeting, if you could mute your mics so there won't be any feedback, please. Awards, presentations, appointments, and proclamations. Presentation by Doug Hassett, Census Partnership Specialist on Census 2020.
Well, good evening, everybody. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and honorable council members. Always an honor and privilege to stand before a council and city servants in general. I just wanted to bring you a few quick updates this evening, and I do have some things I can share on my screen. If I can get permission to share, I'll at least attempt that. I've been doing this with, as many of us have for the first time sometimes, just over the last couple of weeks, but I think I can pull this off if I get lucky here. Let me know when I can share, or I'm assuming my share icon will probably light up.
He's ready.
Okay, give this a shot here and see what we can do. Okay, so, the first thing I would share, if I can bring this up. And I've got to see if I can pull the rest of this out of the way. Can I hit the close button on this, or let's see here? No, it's probably not as close as I'm going to get. Just quickly, and I promise not to keep you too long this evening, just to bring to the forefront some of our operational updates, which, just like everybody else's operations, have been impacted tremendously. And also, I would like to start off by saying that I recognize really clearly all of the wonderful efforts that the City of Twenty-nine Palms really had planned and had intended to boost the awareness of the 2020 census, and I can't tell you how many meetings on my calendar I've canceled for the various events that either the city or entities around the City of Twenty-nine Palms had to cancel, and I feel so bad for everyone that's had to endure that. But you all are really going to champion the census, and I truly mean that. I could see it based on the events in my calendar. But as you can see on this first page for our operational updates, you can see what our original schedule is and what our new schedule is, and even the self-response, you can see everything was going to be done by July 31st. Well, now we're talking October 31st, and depending on what happens, all of these new scheduled dates are actually, as we're told, still soft. So, let's hope we can move forward and close things out and complete the census by October 31st, but as we all know, this is a fluid situation, and we're just all going to have to do whatever we have to do to make it, make it all work. Now, I know, for instance, you've got obviously a huge marine base right, right there in your own yard, and military bases are predominantly counted via what they call group quarters, where we have people that we either train on base or we supply people to go on base, and it's literally a barracks-to-barracks operation, and you can see that was going to be completed by June 5th. Well, now that's September 3rd. We don't have to worry so much about Alaska, thank goodness. On this next page, we were going to have our field operations, our field office operations at peak, the 1st of March. Now, we can see that's looking more like the 1st of June. Update leave, which is that operation which really reaches out, it's much like update enumerate, which you'll see a couple lines down, where we really are reaching out into the public, going door-to-door, leaving the invitation to participate or leaving the actual form for people to fill out so that they can mail those back. All of those, as you can see, have really been delayed significantly. If you look down at update, update enumerate, right there in the middle of the page, originally scheduled for April 30th to complete, now that's back to the end of July. Our non-response follow-up, which is here again, if we don't get a response from an individual, and at this point, I'd like to remind everybody, it's always amazing to think about, but we do have addresses for every structure, you know, mostly residential structures in the nation. We have a whole team of people that go out and gather that information far prior to the beginning of the census, and you probably have heard some of this before, but that non-response follow-up is now kicked back to October as well. In-person group quarters enumeration, September 3rd. So, as you can see, everything's kicked back significantly. You all probably remember talk about the mobile questionnaire assistance centers and what we just called straight questionnaire assistance centers. Those are basically on hold. We don't even really know when those will resume. We think that actually what we're going to do at this point is probably try to do some of that virtually, and in fact, I would say to you that I'll get back to you with more details in the next week or so, but we're hoping that maybe we can work with the cities to somehow organize virtual meetings for those in the community that would actually just like a little education about how to fill out their form, maybe a little more familiarization, a little more time spent letting people know it's safe and how important it is to the community. So, we may do those questionnaire assistance pieces virtually, and like I said, I'll have more details for you probably in the next week or so, but we're certainly going to look for our city partners to maybe give us some guidance and some help, our school district partners, people that have the ability to reach out into the communities and maybe help us with some invitations, things like that. This last page, you can see there's still some things there that, at the top of the page, that are just absolutely tentative, but as we, as you can see there, the portion accounts and that whole process, which would have been done normally by December 31st of 2020, is now kicked clear back to the end of April of 2021. The redistricting process, which should have been done March of 2021, is now kicked back clear to July. Most everything is really pushed back, and I'm sure this is not much different than some of your operations with the city. You've just had to delay, 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 and it's certainly not something we all expected, but we're all having to do our best to deal with it. And then, so the next thing I'd like to share, let me close this and bring up this particular piece. Can you all see that? The response rate map?
No.
You cannot see the response rate map?
So, Matt, this is the, no, you're asking about the, oh, this is, this is.
Is that showing up at all?
No, I see the link, but.
Hmm. Interesting. The link is there, but not the image.
Right.
Well, in the interest of time, I'll kind of talk through this, but, and I'll make sure that, and I think I sent the link this morning even to Frank or maybe Cindy, but I'll send it again. Let me just get Twenty-nine Palms typed back into the search window here, and we'll just look at your response rate, because your response rate is actually quite nice. You guys are doing very well, and let's see here.
Share your screen again.
You think that's it?
Yeah.
Are you seeing?
Yep, we see it.
You there now? Okay, good. All right, wonderful. So, let me, let me get to where I need to go here. Take me just a second. I don't need to be in Alabama, I need to be in California. And California. And then Twenty-nine Palms. You all are currently ahead of the actual California average, or at least you were this morning. We'll take another look. And you can see, well, actually, this morning, you were, the number was higher. Interesting. I'm not sure what has, let me make sure, California, Twenty-nine Palms. By city.
Today's the 12th, isn't it?
Yes, uh huh, let's see. Let's go to the 12th.
Maybe that's the last one.
No, it looks like it's only got up to the 11th, but I, I was looking at different numbers this morning, but I tell you, I will, I will update you more on that tomorrow, but, but still, this is, you know, we're moving along nicely, and I think there's certainly, this is going to be impacted greatly if that's the number, rather than the number I was looking at this morning, if we're truly at 48.6, we're behind the California average. But one thing that I know of for sure is, you know, the high desert is going to be greatly impacted by field workers being able to get out into the field and also counting the military base, counting, you know, everybody over the stumps. So, in fact, you guys probably have a little better idea of the population of that base, even more so than I do, but I think that that, once that's counted, that should greatly affect your percentage and bring you up to a tremendous degree. But I still think this number we're looking at, 48.6, although I'd love to see that come up some more, it's been coming up daily and making great strides weekly, so nothing to be worried about there. I think we just need to give it some more time. But I will make sure that you get this link, because you can also then pull up various tracts of land within Twenty-nine Palms and see what tracts are maybe lagging behind or what tracts maybe actually be doing better. So, that's really mostly what I have to share with you is where you are right now and what our operational updates are for the moment, but I'm happy to field any questions that you might have for me. And let me, let me get my, let me get this down and get back where you can see me, I guess, if that's going to be possible. There we go.
All right.
All right, so, any questions for me?
Any questions from council? Are you out in the public, have any questions or comments? All right, no questions or comments, thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much. I look forward to a time where we can all meet face-to-face. I think that would be a great thing, and let's all just hope and pray that that happens soon and that we don't lose too many more wonderful people off the face of this earth and that we can go back to some sense of normalcy, whatever that will be on the other side of this. But thank you for your service and your guidance to Twenty-nine Palms. You guys are working hard, I know, to make sure your city stays afloat. So, thank you so much for your time.
All right. Thank you, Doug, appreciate it.
All right, I've got to scoot to another meeting, so we'll see you another time.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Bye-bye.
Mm-hmm. Okay, next on the agenda is a presentation by Fire Chief Dan Muncie on an overview of the FP5 funding.
Good afternoon, everybody. Give me a second to figure out this go-to meeting.
Yeah, you had it up a second ago, Dan.
Let's try this right here.
Yep, I can see yours, there you go.
Mayor Klink, council members, City Manager Laquino, thank you for inviting us to be with you tonight. It's absolutely our pleasure, as always, to be truly in front of you. Joining me is going to be Assistant Fire Chief Tom Marshall and Battalion Chief Scott Tuttle. I know that you're very familiar with, with both of them. Tonight, I'm going to provide a brief presentation of our FP5 property tax as it applies to the City of Twenty-nine Palms. This will be the first presentation in the Moronge Basin, and I hope that we'll have more in-depth conversations as time goes on, but I'm going to keep this one fairly brief. Before I start, I want to offer a disclaimer. As your fire chief, I cannot support or oppose measures related to the fire district. This is not that, it is simply only a presentation. It's addressed by City Manager Laquino on how a repeal of FP5 might affect the City of San Bernardino, or excuse me, the City of Twenty-nine Palms. Freudian slip is because I'm looking out my window right now at San Bernardino, watching the sun go down. It's a little rain cloudy, and it's absolutely beautiful outside, but I truly wish that I was joining you in Twenty-nine Palms tonight. So, I'm going to start with a brief overview of the fire district budget. Maybe this slide you're familiar with, and what we're looking at here is our current fiscal year and our budgeted revenue by type. So, the district is primary, has primarily three different types of revenue. We have our property taxes. We have fees, contracts, and other revenues. That may be ambulance service fees, that may be contracts for service with cities or in some cases even with the county of San Bernardino. There's generally some county general fund that's given to our district, and then there's the FP5 special tax. If you look over in the middle, you'll see the South Desert, you follow that over, the South Desert has about $6.8 million in property taxes. There's contracts and fees of approximately $2.5 million, and that's primary, mostly from ambulance service that's provided throughout the South Desert. There's also county general fund, almost to the tune of $1 million, that's given to the district to provide some services to the county areas, and there's about $9.5 million that's raised in that FP5 special tax. Just real quick, briefly, the FP5 property tax is applied across the district. It's $157 and change per year, and that total revenue brings us almost to 21, or excuse me, $20 million. Now, the South Desert's a fairly large district, and I'll show you a picture of that in just a couple of more slides, but that includes all the way from the town of Yucca Valley, straight out through Josh Tree, Twenty-nine Palms, Wonder Valley, takes us all the way out to, to Vidal Junction, and then up to Havasu Lake and to the city of Needles. This slide here shows the voter approved FP5, and that was first applied by Helandale Silver Lake CSD. Helandale decided they wanted a fire station in their little community, so the voters got together with the special tax, approved FP5. The revenue that is raised in that area out in Helandale is about $1.1 million. Later on, as the district expanded, there were several LAFCO-approved annexations, of which Twenty-nine Palms is one. Remember back in July 2016, when the fire department joined the county of San Bernardino, they didn't have any property tax revenues. In fact, they had no revenues at all as their property tax, or excuse me, as their special tax was sunsetting, which it did every few years. The fire department was assigned to the water district, and the water district partnered with the City of Twenty-nine Palms and the county of San Bernardino to do an FP5 annexation. So, the fire department annexed into the fire district, and with the second motion, they annexed into that FP5, which was $157 per parcel. That's raised about $2.3 million, just over that, and all that money is spent in Twenty-nine Palms. You can see the other annexations that are there, San Bernardino came at the same time Twenty-nine Palms did, and Upland came a year later. Last year, back in August, the board approved an FP5 expansion that encompassed all the county fire districts, including those areas that had not voted previously or been annexed into our FP5. Those included the cities of Yucca Valley, as well as areas, the surrounding county areas like Landers and Josh Tree. The grand total that is raised with all this is $9.5 million, as we showed you on the previous slide, to be spent in the South Desert again, which goes from Yucca Valley all the way out to Needles. Just a quick minute talking about fire district operations. When you think of the fire department, the first thing that obviously jumps to your head is fighting fires, but we actually do quite a bit of things. There's aircraft incidents, big rig fires, business inspections, cave rescues, cliff rescues, commercial structure fires. Well, this goes on and on and on. For those of you that can't see the screen, there's many different types of fires, many different types of rescues. Of course, all the medical calls, every one of our fire apparatus is advanced life support, meaning that there's paramedics onboard. We even have some really unique rescue situations, trusting in the county of San Bernardino and our fire department, you could be in Twenty-nine Palms, or even Josh Tree, fighting a wildland fire, as we saw yesterday, and at the same time, you can be up in the mountains dealing with avalanches. It's a really unique district. When you look at regulations for federals and state, what is required, what kind of response times, what kind of service levels are required? And the fact is, there are no federal or state regulations directing the level of service, whether it's response times or outcomes. Outcomes are the actions, how did our actions affect the situation? Were we able to arrive in time to save your grandfather's life if he had a cardiac arrest? Are we able to arrive in time to keep the fire in a bedroom so it doesn't spread to a house? Those are all outcomes. However, the National Fire Protection Agency, commonly known as the NFA, has a guideline that we refer to called 1710. This guideline's for career in urban suburban areas and is a nationally recognized standard. No matter where you're at in the United States, a firefighter will know 1710, and they benchmark their activities of how they should be evaluated. But the response times benchmarking are for a unit, an engine company, or even a ladder truck company, and the benchmark that NFA tends to suggest is it will arrive on the scene of a critical emergency within four minutes, from the time of call receipt to the time when we arrive on scene. Now, 1710 also recognizes that more than one fire engine is necessary to mitigate a lot of emergencies. In the case of an emergency medical service dispatched, or in a large one such as a multi-casual incident or in a structured fire, NFA suggests that you have the first full alarm, the first alarm, arrive within eight minutes, 90% of the time. We think a lot about the cascade of events, so those things that need to occur before an incident is mitigated, and on this particular slide, we're looking at a structured fire. And the structured fire depiction here is showing the progression of flashover. Flashover occurs when all the gases in a house suddenly ignite at the same time, and the house completely catches on fire. So, for example, if you had a trash can in the corner of your room, many of us do, and that trash can catches on fire, it's burning, superheated gases are rising towards the ceiling, and as those gases are spreading along the ceiling, they're radiating heat down on everything in your room, whether it's your bed, your couch, your carpet, your desk, and all of those objects, as they're heating up, are releasing unburned gases. Those unburned gases come up to the ceiling, and they start mixing with these super-hot gases, and when these unburned gases reach their ignition point, the whole room flashes over, sudden ignition. If a human is in that room, they die. Flashover generally occurs in a modern residential structure within seven and a half minutes. So, the cascade of events that need to occur are, you have your event initiation. That means that a fire has started, and somebody has to recognize that it's started, or a device, a lot of us have different type of fire alarms that can automatically notify 911 nowadays. It has to recognize there's a fire, notify a 911 dispatch center. The 911 dispatch center, that generally takes one to two minutes. The 911 dispatch center then, remember, the calls are routed to law enforcement first, then they come to the fire department, so there's that process time. The dispatcher will ask some questions or look to see where's the fire located. They'll ask if everybody's out of the house. They'll start programming into their computers to dispatch the fire unit. It takes generally about a minute. So, now we're three minutes into the incident, and the fire department, the firefighters haven't even been notified to go on a call yet. Now, the alarm sounds at the fire department, and the dispatch is given. The firefighters then start responding, that's what we call a turnout time. In the case of a structured fire, you've got to remember, we need to put on all our structured turnout gear. That takes about a minute as you're preparing to leave the station. So, now the fire engine is finally leaving the station, and that took anywhere between four to five minutes. Now, the next critical component is travel time, and we'll talk a little about travel times as we progress through our slides, but that's the amount of time that it takes from driving from the station to the point when you're on scene of an incident. Once you arrive on incident, you obviously need to set up and take action to mitigate an event. So, this is a cascade of events, and we're constantly looking at this, and how can we decrease our response times to make sure that we're getting in an incident? If you take the times that I just described, you'll have two, three, four, five, five minutes before you even have your travel time. On average, and the travel time will show you that in the South Desert, it'd be anywhere from, from a couple of minutes if you're near a station, to maybe 15 minutes in certain parts of Twenty-nine Palms, and then you just set up and take action. So, at that point, before we even arrive, flashover may have occurred in your house. And if you can, and if you can. And NPA 17-10 also suggests target numbers. Again, this is a suggestion. Recommend that a travel time, which is the time it takes for an engine to leave the fire station, arrive on scene, be within four minutes, 90% of the time. It's a full assignment, which is the total amount of resources that you need on incident to arrive, 90% of the time. 17-10 recommends a first unit staffing of four firefighters at minimum. Generally, in Southern California, the minimum for most fire departments is three members, including our fire department. With a full assignment staffing on a residential structure fire, somewhere between 15 to 17 firefighters total. They also provide some benchmarks for EMS calls, or emergency medical service calls, of having an advanced life support unit arrive on scene within eight minutes. Fire chiefs are constantly thinking about some core concepts, and I want to review these really quick. Distribution and contribute, and excuse me, concentration. Distribution is where are your fire stations located in respect to the area you're trying to cover. Concentration means how close are there, how many units are in one station, to try to get our resources on scene in the best time possible. The resources arriving on scene to mitigate an incident, we call it an effective response force. That's the minimal number of firefighters that are needed to mitigate an event. On an EMS call, for instance, if somebody has a heart attack or cardiac arrest, we'll have three firefighters, and two of our partners at Morongo Basin Amulets show up to that call for a total of five personnel for that cardiac arrest. In that particular scenario, in the South Desert region or Twenty-Nine Palms, five would be our effective response force. We also look at reliability. How often are you meeting your benchmarks? If you have a, our fire station in Twenty-Nine Palms are already on a call, and they get a second call, well, they're not gonna achieve their benchmark. That would be an example of reliability. Risk expectations is decided on by the community. That's not decided on by the fire chief. That simply is a local decision for the task, on what level of risk should be, should their community be exposed to at any given time. The community members and stakeholders also look at the service level objectives. What is the fire department trying to do? Certainly, as firefighters, we have recommendations, and we'll advocate for response times, and how many firefighters we're gonna need on a scene. But ultimately, it's these stakeholders, our public partners, our citizens, and our residents that decide, how much do they want to pay for fire protection? And then existing deployment is the current service model, or how our fire engines are currently deployed versus a future scenario. We're pretty sophisticated as we look at deployment nowadays. In this example, there's a picture on the screen that's showing our DECON software. DECON is a call analytics tool, analytic tool, and it looks at predictive modeling. It looks at a given area. If I looked at Twenty-Nine Palms, it would tell me approximately how many medical calls will we have next year? How many fires will we have next year? How many rescues? And where would these calls likely be located? Using this type of software, we're able to do a couple of things. One is, as we plan new fire stations, we're able to locate them in locations to provide us the best response time. We can also look at some really unique events. In the city of Twenty-Nine Palms, for instance, there's a lot of water rescues in the summers. We get our monsonal rains. We could look at where those water rescues are occurring, and before the rains even start, Assistant Fire Chief Tom Marshall could call and move up numerous resources into the Twenty-Nine Palms areas, and pre-position those resources to be prepared to affect those rescues. This is one example that's shown on the screen. We're looking at a residential structure fire, and I mentioned earlier, it takes between 15 to 17 firefighters to distinguish a residential structure fire safely, while keeping that fire to the area of origin, the room of origin. So why? Well, you need one chief officer, someone to direct the activities of the firefighters. You want to make sure it's coordinated. It's a very, very, fighting fire is very, very dangerous, and if firefighters aren't coordinated, they could be doing activities that affects the safety of our firefighters. As a matter of fact, about eight years ago, I'll give you a quick example. One of the firefighters I went to the fire academy with was inside of a structured fire, and he was crawling to the bedroom where they believed the victim would be. At the same time, another firefighter ventilated a window. He broke a window, causing the fire to be drawn towards my friend that was doing the search rescue, and it killed him. It's an example of why you'd want to have a chief officer on scene. But we also need to have somebody that's manning the pump on the fire engine. It's really important that we do that, because pumps have problems, they shut down. You need someone that are there that's going to troubleshoot it. If additional lines are deployed, you want somebody there that can tell the pump, you need to pump these lines. You want somebody there that can monitor the water supply, that is able to look at whether, how much water you have left in your fire engine in the tank? How is the hydrant working? Do you need to call the city of Twenty-Nine Palms Water District and ask them to boost pressure? You also need firefighters to actually go in and attack that fire. CAL-OSHA requires that for every two firefighters we have inside of a building, you need to have two firefighters outside of the building prepared to effect a rescue. So very quickly, you start getting up to the required 15 to 17 firefighters are required. Certainly, there's other ways that you can fight fires. Simply put, if you had a three-person crew, they could arrive at the house, take a hose, go to a window, break a window, try to extinguish the fire from outside the house, and then if there's no, if there's no danger in the inside of the house, they can make entry and finish extinguishment. Doing so may affect the fire spread, may not allow you to affect a victim rescue, and if the CAL-OSHA laws apply, where the interior is, has gases that may be dangerous to your life, you may not be able to make entry until additional firefighters arrive. So we've just talked about concentration and distribution of the staff firefighters, the number of firefighters, reliability, and effective response force. All of these could be affected by a repeal of FP5 to the fire district. So the next few slides will provide more macro review of how FP5 might affect the district. On the far right corner, you'll see the South Desert ran 11,862 calls last year. The South Desert currently has six staff fire stations per day, to cover about 8,500 square miles, somewhere around there. Without FP5 funding, there would be three fire stations, so that number would be cut in half. Those calls, 11,862 calls, which, the calls obviously rise every single year by anywhere between 3% to 5%, they're still gonna exist. People are still gonna expect us to go on those calls, but there's a lot less resources. This chart shows a depiction of how many calls are responded to by firefighters in a particular zone. You'll see the South Desert, currently, each firefighter responds to about 233 calls per year. Without the FP5 funding, that increases to 439 calls per year. The South Desert, a firefighter responds to far more fires, or excuse me, calls, whether it's fires, rescue, EMS, than any other firefighter in the county. You can see the valley zone, that's all the way from Upland through San Bernardino to Mentone. You can see the mountain, which is our mountain areas. Our north desert is Hisperia, all the way out to Baker, as well as some cities. The city of Chino, a firefighter could respond to 88 calls per year. Ontario, 145. Rancho Cucamonga, 145. Apple Valley, 229. And then the South Desert, right now it's 233. That number could almost double to 439. Not the amount of calls that I worry about, our firefighters. I do, I do worry about them responding to too many calls. Very fatiguing, and not only physically, but also mentally. What I worry about are, what are those other activities firefighters should be doing every single day, that they're no longer able to do because they're running, they're responding to a lot of calls. Some of those things are public education, some of those things are fire prevention, visiting the schools, it's providing CPR training to our citizens, it's also providing the required state, federal mandated training that they must accomplish every single year. All of those are affected. Chart also is just showing how many calls are responded to, but it doesn't show how the length of time that's required per call. In the South Desert, I'll show you in just a moment how long it takes to actually get to the calls, and you'll realize that they're significantly more busy than their peers. This is our average response times. On average, how long does it take for a fire engine to leave the fire station? In the South Desert, average, it's about 10 and a half minutes, with the current six fire stations. If FP5, if FP5 were repealed, that response time could rise to 18 minutes, 45 seconds. The way I was able to determine these response times is, again, is using that sophisticated software, the analytical software, and I told the software to pick three fire stations and close them, remove the apparatus from them, but pick the three that would, that would hurt response times the least. Give me the best scenario with only three fire stations to cover this 8,500 miles. Now, some of these, some of these responses, if you were, for instance, needing to leave from Needles and come all the way out to, to Vidal Junction, that's gonna be a pretty long response, about 45 minutes. But that's offset by the calls in Yucca Valley and Twenty-Nine Palms, where our firefighters are able to respond on scene fairly quickly. And the city of Twenty-Nine Palms could be anywhere from one minute generally, and more than half the calls are responded to within four to five minutes, with a 90th percentile, probably somewhere around 15. So that information's skewed a little bit, but I think it's a good description to show how response times may be affected by repeal of FP5. This is our current staffing levels. In yellow, you see the South Desert Regional Service Zone, of which Twenty-Nine Palms is part of. Currently, we have 51 total firefighters. Without FP5, that number will be reduced down to 27 firefighters. Now, that's not per day, that's total. Firefighters work shifts, just like anybody else. There are a total of nine firefighters per day that are in the Morongo Basin. There would be a total of nine firefighters total for the entirety of the South Desert Zone, again, all the way from Yucca Valley, all the way out to Needles, with FP5 repeal. A couple of the service impacts that might be seen with an FP5 repeal. So let me give you a quick overview. I've mentioned before, the district's rather large. This chart shows where the staff fire stations are. There's one in Yucca Mesa, one in Josh Tree, and one in Twenty-Nine Palms from Morongo Basin. And then as you start getting out towards the river, you'll see one at Havasu Landing. Needles is our next fire station. So total of six fire stations. The other two fire stations you see indicated with a blue diamond, those are paid call fire stations, where we're unable to recruit paid call firefighters. Station 55 is Black Meadows Landing. Station 17 is Big River, right there, just before you get into Parker, Arizona. The South Desert, most people know I worked the vast majority of my career out there, and I was blessed to, because it's such a great place to work, not only the community, also the complexities that you face as a firefighter. It's a great place to really learn your trade, but there's hundreds of miles of freeway transportation corridors, there's generally long response times in remote areas. You have the Colorado River, which borders it on the east end. And almost every call for service in the South Desert includes a higher level of complexity due to those distances, due to certain factors, maybe that there's no fire hydrants in the area, or just not enough personnel to complete tasks in a timely manner. It certainly takes a lot of commitment by our firefighters. As we discussed previously, if FP5 were to decrease, three fire stations would need to be closed. There'd just simply not be any funding for those stations. There would be a deduction of firefighters down to nine personnel per day, and their average response times, as we showed you, using our DECON analytical software, were nearly double. Not only is the Morongo Basin affected, but our admin, our special operations are affected. This chart shows what our special operations are in the county. We have training and safety. We have to provide training to our firefighters, and also citizens. We do firefighter recruit training, which is 16-week tower training. That training's required by the state of California. It covers all of the OSHA, CAL-OSHA, federal and state mandates, to manage the fire district faces and our firefighters. There's also specialty training. Our firefighters generally each pick a specialty, in some cases, is rescue, or hazmat, or aircraft rescue firefighting. And then we also have safety officers that we employ on major incidents to make sure we're keeping our firefighters safe and to manage risk to our agency. We also provide emergency medical services, which includes our training, our ambulance program, of which Yucca Valley is an example, program development, and quality insurance, quality improvement for medical calls. And then we have a large wildland fire division. Obviously, as you saw yesterday, the Morongo Basin is primed to burn for the first time in a couple of years. We've had some seasonal grass like I haven't seen in, well, since the Sawtooth Fire, those of you that remember that. But it's very important that we have our hand crews, not so much to fight the fire, but to mitigate the fires before they occur. You'll see our firefighters out working in fields, they'll work in some of our interface areas, they'll do some fuel modifications. So if a fire starts, it's not able to spread as rapidly, we keep the fires smaller. We also have a great partnership with the Sheriff's Department. Last time I was visiting, I told you that Lucas Niles is my hero, and we appreciate that, that relationship, along with Sheriff McMahon. Yeah, we have an inmate fire crew. Sheriff's Department supplies the inmates, no, that's not their deputies, those are the ones that haven't been caught yet, it's the ones that are wearing orange, and they work with our firefighters, and our firefighters provide them training as wildland firefighters. We take them out, board us on wildland fires, as well as flooding incidents, they'll do sandbagging, they'll help us on larger commercial fires. We have some rules. They have to be fairly decent individuals, they have to be incarcerated for non-violent crimes, we really kind of screen them, and they also can't work immediately adjacent to homes and residents, we keep them distant. We have a heavy equipment operation program. You'll see our heavy equipment, such as our dozers, our bulldozers, out there on fires on the Morongo Basin. They're there to cut fire lines and stop the spread of fire. And then we have a helicopter program, again, in partnership with our Sheriff's Department, where we supply a, two paramedics to be on the sheriff's helicopter, they supply a pilot and a crew chief. That helicopter has not only water dropping capabilities, but it's also able to do a lot of hoist rescues and get out to our county areas rather quick. It's a great partnership. Our special operations includes the wildland division, as we've discussed, training and safety, and EMS division. So what are some of the operational impacts? There's fewer resources available, and a loss of probably about one-third of our administrative staff, and our entire wildland camp system, and about a third of our training division, which would really reduce the ability to continue to provide a lot of these enhanced services that we discussed. We also lose the ability to train our firefighters on an operational level of knowledge, the specialists in hazmat and rescue. We would need to keep people on the basic level. Very expensive to continue to provide firefighters on that level. The Office of the Fire Marshal will also see impacts. Community Safety Division is committed to creating a safe community through community risk reduction. The fire service the last couple of years has really changed their mindset from response to mitigation. We simply cannot respond to all the calls in our jurisdiction. We have to prevent the incidents from occurring. The Community Safety Division looks at that. They do a risk analysis, and they determine that perhaps we're starting to see more than one type of flood rescue in a certain area of Twenty-Nine Palms. They would work with city engineers, with the city, with the fire department, and they would look for available grants, and they would look to see, how do we mitigate cars from driving down this roadway during a flooding, or cars from entering a wash when they shouldn't? We need to stop responding to calls, we need to prevent them. Repeal of FP5 might affect our ability to do that. The Fire Marshal provides many, many different services, fire planning and engineering, including the city of Twenty-Nine Palms, plans reviews, new construction inspections. They do our annual and state mandated fire inspections. Those are the inspections that are required by law or ordinance for us to complete. That includes not only business inspections, but inspections on facilities that might store hazardous waste, schools, things like that. They do public education in our schools in our community, they have a juvenile fire starter program, and they have fire suppression support activities, such as doing damage assessment after earthquakes, or after fires, or crew support, and arson investigation unit. With an FP5 reveal, $2.7 million that's allocated towards the Fire Marshal could no longer be allocated. A lot of that money is coming from the different service zones, because the Fire Marshal provides services to the city. Now, it's, I don't believe it's gonna affect, would affect our plans check, or the time it takes to turn around our plans, or interrupt the flow, that's also fee-driven, but it would take longer to do a lot of the community outreach events, do the public education events. That's really where it might affect if there was an FP5 repeal. Finally, there's some enhanced service impacts. I've discussed some of these already, that's aircraft rescue, that's air rescue, the medical care transport, various fire attack hazards, material response and mitigation, inclement weather, fire rescue, EMS service. I mentioned earlier- I mentioned earlier, Assistant Chief Tom Marshall might call and bring up resources if they knew the Morongo Basin was going to be flooding. We've done that over the last three years. This would hamper his ability to call rescue workers from out the county to come to 29 Palms, there just simply wouldn't be firefighters that we could allocate for that mission. The technical rescue, swift water, and the wilderness rescue that's undertaken. Just about a month ago, Battalion Chief Total was out on a mine rescue, where we had somebody trapped in a mine, and we were able to call our technical rescue out there to help, in conjunction with the Sheriff's Department, pull that person out of the mine. Finally, there's always secondary impacts. These are sometimes intangible, but might be affected with an FP5 repeal. First is a decrease in ISO rating. The Insurance Service Office provides a rating schedule for how safe a community is. The higher, excuse me, the lower, the lower ISO number that a community has, generally, their residential and commercial insurance rates will be lower. As you decrease fire protection, the ISO tends to, number tends to rise, or rise as does the insurance rates. We support other county departments. Over the last couple of weeks, we've really been active with some of the departments to get out to the Morongo Basin, we've opened up some of our fire stations as food distribution points, our firefighters have been there, helping some of the departments distribute food and to provide services to our Morongo Basin residents, whether it's COVID testing, or ensuring that the homeless population is taken care of during COVID. Decrease in large emergency incident funding. Every year, we put aside in anticipation that we're going to have fires, like you saw in Joshua Tree, that requires other agencies to come in and assist. Sometimes we need to pay for those agencies, sometimes we need to bring back firefighters the next day and bring additional firefighters on, that's what our emergency incident funding would be used for. We also have decreased the ability to provide mutual and automatic aid. If you have less resources that you can loan to other jurisdictions when they have big incidents, and they're less willing to provide their resources into your jurisdiction when you have larger incidents. Decreased ability to reduce risk prior to events, decrease public education and fire prevention, and decrease ability to fund capital and apparatus replacement. My last slide, I understand that this isn't as specific as many members of the audience would like it to be. And again, remind you that I can't advocate for or against a repeal or a ballot measure, I can only give you a general overview. I also can't tell you definitively that loss of FP5 would close this station or that station. That would be made by using that analytical software to truly looking at what are the effects on the community, what is the risk faced by the community. It may mean that a fire station's open for the year, and then maybe months and then six months later, another fire station's open. It may mean a different response model altogether, there's many, many factors that would need to be decided if FP5 was repealed. With that, I would like to answer any questions from the council.
Thank you, Dan. Anybody have any questions for Chief? Anybody out in the audience? All right, thank you very much, Dan, we appreciate the presentation.
You're welcome. I'm going to look forward to coming back to the council and providing additional information in the near future. I truly appreciate your time.
All right, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is council comments and reports of meetings attended. Councilmember Wright.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Having attended any meetings as of yet, supposed to have JPA virtual on Thursday, other than that. Oh, forgot, we did do National Day of Prayer, we did that via Facebook this year, so it was pretty interesting and different, but we did do that, and we did have the proclamation and all that, so that was it. Thank you very much.
All right. Councilmember Builderang.
I only attended a couple of internal city committee meetings, that's all I have. Mr. Mayor.
All right. Councilmember O'Gilvie.
I did not attend anything, thank you.
All right. Mayor Pro Tem Mintz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to go to the Up Close Show, because the mayor had other commitments, and it was interesting to do that in front of the radio. I did ask Gary, how come there's only two callers? He says, because we put out so much information, which I think the city manager did a great job filling in a lot of the questions that Gary had and sending the information, so it was good, thank you.
All right. And I thank you very much for doing that, I appreciate it. My wife listened to you guys, and she said you guys did an awesome job.
Oh, thanks.
I'd like to wish everybody out there in 29 Palms and the Morongo Basin, celebrating birthdays in May, a happy birthday. I attended virtual, it's just not the same as being there, it's just so hard to get in edgewise, talk-wise with 30-some mayors on a telephone call. The SBCTA meeting, a lot of it had to do with property acquisitions, right-of-ways for 395 and stuff like that. And I think that's about all that I have. Anybody else think of anything while I was talking? Okay, we'll move on to the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are to be considered routine by the City Council. City Council, in its capacity as successor agency to the former 29 Palms redevelopment agency, and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. Any item may be removed from the consent calendar and considered separately by the City Council. The public will be given an opportunity to comment on consent calendar items prior to the City Council action. Councilmembers, do you need to pull any consent calendar items? Do I have anybody out there listening that would like to comment on the consent calendar or have an item removed to discuss? Okay, I'll move it back to council.
I make a motion, we accept the consent calendar, and I abstain from warrants checks number 10439, 10469, and 10485, Project Phoenix, conflict of interest.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor from Mayor Pro Tem Mintz, and seconded by Councilmember O'Gilvie. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wright.
Aye.
Councilmember Builderang.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Gilvie.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Mintz.
Aye.
Mayor Klink.
Aye.
Approved, five oh.
All right. Items removed, we had none. Public hearing, we have none. Discussions and potential action items, CARES Act CDBG funding. The recommendations the City Council approve the use of the CARES Act CDBG funding to replace the general fund backfill and allocate the 102,000 in funds toward food providers in the community. Randy?
Thank you, Councilmembers.
Welcome.
Two weeks ago, the Community Development and Housing Act, or CDH, sent out a request for funding for the CARES Act for funding of COVID-related projects. The deadline for filing this grant issue was less than two weeks, due on Monday, May 40. After much discussion with CDH about the use of the funds, and what staff has franked and carried on how best to use these and benefit the city, staff is making the recommendation that the city apply for the $102,000 in CDBG funds, and use the funds to stabilize the demand, and assist the local nonprofit agencies with access to food for distribution for low-income families, and weekly meals distribution to our elderly and homeless residents that have been affected by the COVID-19 pandemic. The city has seen an increase request for information regarding resources that are available to help feed their families due to closure of businesses and the loss of employment. Agencies that provide these essential sources have been seeing an increase in demand and shortage of funds due to COVID-19. An example that is best to show the need is the senior center. It closed in March, which normally serves 40 to 45 meals per day, or 789 per month by FSA. At this point in time, they are serving over 115 meals per day, for a total of 2,530 meals per month. Instead of serving the meals at the senior center due to the COVID-19 virus, Reach Out Morongo Basin is working with the FSA to deliver the meals, and it's five days of meals that they get on Friday out to the seniors. So they actually package all the meals up, they're frozen containers, that can be microwaved or heated in the oven, along with all the accessories, and create bags for 115 different seniors. And then they can go out throughout 29 Palms and deliver each of those meals. And they do that every Friday, and they've been doing it for the last six to 10 weeks. So it's working very well. It's increasing. When we first started, the first week, we're about 45 to 50 meals, and like I said, we're up to 115 meals, and it's growing continuously. They're not the only organization that's growing, and we list some of those numbers for you later on. Using the various agencies requested in the CDB funds for fiscal year 2021, staff is recommending the following allocations of CARES Act funds. Morongo Basin Arch, 10,000. Reach Out Morongo Basin, 27,000. 29 Palms Food Pantry, 20,000. Food for Life, 20,000. Family Services, 15,000. And the Sanctuary Church, 10,000, for a total of 102. These funds are double for what they requested, except for the Sanctuary Church, they're the group that serves the hot meals on Tuesdays or Wednesdays. They have not applied for CDB funds, but we include this because their numbers are growing exponentially also. However, this is two, three agencies that have not got any funding or won't get any funding in the next two years, that being the County Library, the Mill Tree Veterans Project, and Sura. They don't provide the services that we thought were essential to, for providing food. The City Council can choose to reallocate the funds in different amounts to the agencies, but due to the shortness of the grant application, because they're waiting for excerpts of minutes, the County Board of Supervisors is approving within the next two weeks for them to approve how to spend the funds. This is quickly going, very quickly. This will eliminate the use of general fund dollars that we normally have given out. Normally, we give out $50,000 a year, 102,000 will be taken up for the next two years, which frees up 100,000 in general fund dollars. And I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Randy. Any questions?
Yes, so this is, this is in addition to what we normally would get, or it's not? This is just what we'd get from the county?
No, it's separate. This is a separate grant that came down, a federal grant for COVID-related items. It's called the CARES Act.
Okay, so...
We already got the other money that we already allocated for Project Phoenix, that is separate.
That's separate.
Normally, what we do is we backfill, because we don't give that money to the different agencies, we backfill, which allows us a varied number of people that we can give to, the amounts that we want to give to. By a couple of things, one of the things you need to know, we are the applicant for this project, which allows us to be able to allocate funds to a variety of different agencies, but a larger number. Normally, we would be only allowed to get to three different agencies. So they would have to apply on their own, and be subject to going through the process. This went very quickly, going through, we're trying to find the best way to use this, by us being the applicant, we have to subcontract with each of the different agencies, they have to do all the paperwork the county is always required, we have to accumulate all that stuff and give a monthly report back to the county.
Okay. So this is, I'm kind of confused, because you said that the library would not be able to have any funds for the next two years.
This, right, 102,000 is two years' worth of our backfunding that we normally would do.
Gotcha.
That's up to the council to make that decision.
So next year, nobody will get anything now?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Anybody out in the audience wish to comment, or anybody online or watching us livestream, do you have any thing you'd like to ask Randy? I'll give you about a half a minute. Remember, you can send it on info@29palms.org to have it read out loud for you. Seeing no takers, then we'll bring it back to council. Further discussion, motion?
I'll make the motion, have the council approve the use of the CARES Act CDB grant money.
Second.
I have a motion from Mayor Pro Tem, and seconded by Councilmember Wright. Roll call.
Councilmember Builderang.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Gilvie.
Aye.
Councilmember Wright.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Mintz.
Aye.
Mayor Klink.
Aye.
Approved, five oh.
Number eight, preliminary budget for fiscal year 2020, 2021. Staff is looking for direction in the following items.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The items in front of you this evening, staff is recommending a few recommendations that I'll read out loud. Staff is, the staff merit and cost of living COLA increases to be frozen as of the proclamation of local emergency on March 17th for 12 months through March 16th, 2021. The second recommendation is just piggybacking off of the prior recommendation from Mr. Council, that the additional CARES Act Community Development Block Grant allocation of $102,000 to be allocated to the nonprofit food distribution applicants and replacing the general fund appropriations. Recommendation three, staff would like to amend, that basically, that says postpone the summer day camp, given the COVID-19 restrictions of limitations of gatherings until CDC removes the restrictions on social gatherings. Item number four is put a pause on funding for other post-employment benefits, OPEB, of $125,000. Then finally, just looking for just general staff council comments, additions, deletions from the proposed fiscal year budget. There is, you know, within the attachments, and I'll just run through the attachments here real quick, you know, the first attachment is all the detail budget, so that first attachment is all the detail, and it's, okay, it wasn't that much, is all the detail. The next attachment is the revenue estimations for this fiscal year that we're currently in, beginning with the COVID proclamation on March 17th, which shows about a $616,000 The next one is the fiscal 2021 estimation of revenues lost in that next fiscal year, which is fiscal 2021, was looking at about a $766,000 reduction of revenue. Then the employee census, this basically shows the amount of employees by month in their anniversary timeframe, along with that last line there of those who are topped out, which is the largest census group within the city employees. So to pop into, you know, the PowerPoint, and they'll kind of walk through kind of where we're at, and I'm just going to make this a little bigger here, so what we're going to review in some of those attachments, and this is in a summary, you had that summary of the current fiscal year, you got next fiscal year, we got actions that we've already taken, some recommendations, and the review of the preliminary budget. Let me stop on this one, this preliminary budget timeframe. The City Council has put together an ad hoc committee, an ad hoc committee of the Budget Finance Committee, that consists of Councilmember Mintz and Councilmember Builderang, that we met last week to review the budget, and one of the things that came out of the discussion, a very good recommendation from the subcommittee, was in our current, currently, we have, the council has adopted a two-year budget, so the fiscal year that we're in now and next fiscal year, so we adopted a two-year budget. So we, at this timeframe, would be continuing to go on... So we, at this timeframe, would be continuing to go on with the second-year budget with some amendments, with some, you know, there's always some, some minor amendments. However, the, the COVID-19 happened, okay, which necessitated us to really take a deep dive into our budget to make sure we're reacting properly to, to the loss of revenue, which we did. I think it's in the recommendation, and correct me if I'm wrong, from the ad hoc committee, I think the recommendation is after tonight's review and kind of the actions that we've taken, that we will come back in September. And the reason it's September is, is there's not going to be any really new information from today into those dates that are in front of us. The, the majority of the impact of revenues are sales tax and TOT, both of which happen in arrears, you know, as far as reporting, right? TOT and sales tax, the next reporting period will be July 31st. So at July 31st, we'll know, we'll have an indicator, if you will, of sales tax, we'll have an indicator, if you will, of TOT tax. So this will be the last time that we review it, so I won't go by that schedule. We'll come back again in September and also try to get a long-term forecast from that point forward. So budget reserves, we've talked about this, and just again, for disclosure of that, the reserves, 7.6 million. Council has already allocated $380,000 for a transitional fund. Within our reserves, we have $1.2 million for the firefighter, Water District firefighter pension, which leaves undesignated reserves at $6 million. These are the strategic priorities that has been adopted, most of which we've kind of addressed, some of which, because of the crisis, we're not going to have those resources to address. The downtown specific plan, we just actually turned in the, we already received the grant, but some of the applications to move forward with the RFP was today, so we're moving forward with that. Utah Trail Specific Plan, we haven't had any progress on that. Surface Water Master Plan, we don't have a master plan, but we have addressed the Donnell Basin as it relates to water management. Economic Development Plan, we were working with the Copper Mountain College on this. However, given the COVID, that has been in a pause. Technology, very specifically, the community development software, animal control software for efficiencies. Medical benefit premiums, last year or the current year that we're in, we did adjust the premiums that is paid by the city, or the contribution paid by the city towards the premiums. The, the next fiscal year, we probably won't be able to enhance that. Music art festivals, really haven't made a whole lot of progress on new festivals this year, and given the, the COVID responses, probably won't be able to do any in the, in the, the summer and fall. Veterans Resources, we work with the library to expand some of the resources at the library. Bike Pass, we're working on two-mile, two, actually, well, two-mile will be some active transportation projects, ATP projects, sidewalk projects, along with Hatchin-Lorea, not Lorea, Hatchin-Sullivan for those bike paths, and also Ambly Road. Homeless, we continue to outreach with our regional organizations, Project Phoenix, we're under construction, and Wastewater, we're working with the base on that regional project. So this is the budget that the council adopted in the two-year. As you could see, the surplus in both of the years was in place. We wanted intentionally had a surplus in there, given the fact that we knew Project Phoenix was coming online, so we wanted to have a surplus in place. Then came the COVID. So we adjusted our revenues. If you look at fiscal year 1920, we adjusted our revenues and some expenses, and we're going to have anticipated a deficit in this current year of $758,000, $758,000. You, you take in the COVID transitional fund of 380, we'll deficit 378. Next year, given the reduction of revenues and reduction of expenses, we'll surplus 463,000. So if you look at the combination, and this is what the council, you know, gave me direction on, wanted to not dip in the reserves over this two-year period, okay? So if you look at that, you'll see about $100,000 surplus. And just kind of park that for, for a minute. So right now, as what's presented, is $100,000 surplus. These are just some of the impacts, you know, that are felt, you know, with the COVID. So again, in the current year that we're at, $616,000 loss of revenue, majority TOT tax. Next year, $766,000 loss of revenue, again, mainly in TOT tax. The actions that staff has taken, you know, frozen step in COLA, part-time layoffs, voluntary furloughs, early retirements, miscellaneous costs, as you could see, over $650,000 of, of activity. And I'm going to skip that one for now and kind of go to the recommendation. So the first recommendation, and let me talk about, is the, the local proclamation, local emergency proclamation happened on March 17th. And I know we had some dialogue about this last council meeting, which is why I wanted to put this as an action item this evening. Staff is still recommending that that freeze take place during that timeframe. The city didn't pick that timeframe. You know, it, it happened, you know, it happened with the COVID. And we feel, the staff feels, that that is a timeframe that is acceptable. It's not the fiscal year, granted. However, that is when the loss of revenue began. And analyzing it, and that's why that one slide was there, regardless of whatever time you have in the year that you freeze it, you're going to have winners and losers as it relates to if you just got it or if you just didn't get it, regardless of when you slide it. So staff is recommending that. Staff is also recommending, as Mr. Counsel did the previous presentation of CDBG, $102,000 going to, going to the nonprofit food distribution applicants. We did talk about this last meeting in general. We thought originally we can give it as business contributions to some of our small businesses. However, the requirements surrounding that were so strenuous that we felt this was the best pathway forward. Some of the business strenuous activities were, the businesses had to turn in quarterly payroll reports, they had to keep the employees for three years. If they did not keep the employees for three years, they had to pay back the money. If they didn't pay back the money, the city had to pay back the money, which is why we're giving this recommendation. The next one is summer day camp, and just talk a little bit more about summer day camp. And Ms. Military and Mr. Counsel are here this evening to even talk a little bit more about it. Staff is adjusting this recommendation, not canceling, but postponing the summer day camp, given the COVID-19 restrictions, until CDC, you know, relents on their current restrictions, six feet distancing. And, and within the staff report, we kind of talk about it maybe for even, I know all the council is very familiar with the program, but, you know, it is a 11, 11-week program. And the 11-week program is, or 10-week program, that we have about 50, 50 participants from grades one, first grade through fifth grade. And some of the activities that staff entertains the, the children on are Lucky Park Pool, and currently, there are no allowances to opening up the pool. The pool is still somewhat of an unknown at this point. The library, not sure, there's no guidance in the library of when and if that opens. You know, the governor has given bookstores the authority to open from a curbside perspective, but you can't go in, so that doesn't add any activity. Bowling, again, there's no state or county guidance on opening. Three out-of-town excursions to theme parks. And again, that's, theme parks are probably in the governor's stage, or is in the governor's stage four. Presentations of guests, arts and crafts, movie days, pizza days, splash days, and outdoor recreations, kind of sum up those activities. The reason that the staff is, you know, amending this recommendation with the assumption of, that there is a relenting of some of the guidelines that are out there, but given the current guidelines, staff believes that it's, our first priority is to make sure the safety of our staff and the participants. And given the current guidelines with CDC, we're not sure how we can keep, you know, first through fifth graders separated in a controlled environment, for one. You know, there are requirements for temperature taking of both the, the students and the counselors. There, there are requirements that, I think it's one per 10 students that have, have to be directly with those, those, those students. They can't intermingle to cross-contaminate, if you will. So for those and other reasons, the staff does not feel that it is appropriate to move forward currently, given the guidelines. And Ms. Military is here to maybe add a little bit more to that and answer any questions of council, if there are any.
Questions? Does he have any questions?
And Carrie, did I kind of summarize all the restrictions? Did I miss anything of great importance?
There's quite a few more. Yeah, but you pretty much hit the nail on the head in regards to, you know, the social distancing aspect of it. A major draw to our programming is all the fun things that we do. We go to the pool, we go to the library, we go to the bowling alley, we go to Chuck E. Cheese, we go to Boomer, the water parks. All of those are closed right now. You know, I looked into CDC guidelines for childcare facilities. We're a temporary facility. We're not really considered a daycare or childcare facility, we're a summer camp. So we're a multi-use facility, seasonal program. So all of the restrictions or guidelines that, sorry, this is why I'm breathing. The CDC recommends, it's pretty difficult for us to modify our facility to meet those guidelines. You know, we were looking at prices for portable hand wash stations, which we would have to install. We have two restrooms in that facility, one sink in each restroom. We would have to install three additional portable hand washing stations in order to make sure we're in line with the CDC recommendations. I'm sorry. My glasses are fogging up too. So some of the prices, oh, that's better. The grand total for the 50 days that the summer day camp would be open for the three hand washing stations from Belts would be $9,120. Burtec would be $13,669.66, just for three portable hand washing stations for 50 days of operations. So it's, it's quite a bit we would have to do. We would also have to create an isolation room in the event that any of the staff or children were to get sick. And that would require a separate restroom and a barrier that goes from floor to ceiling, ceiling to floor. Pretty difficult for us, though. There's a lot of rules. My priority has always been for summer day camp, safety is number one, fun is number two. So you can't have all of the fun with all the safety guidelines in place right now.
So Mr. Mayor, council, so given all that, and again, we adjusted our, our recommendation to suspend it until CDC kind of relents on some of the restrictions, and will continue the planning for if and when that does get released, so we can release the program?
I would, I would maybe add into that not even telling the parents from the, from the get-go, we're not going to be going out of town or doing anything like that. Nothing that a camp would do, I think we just really should just stay in the area if we can open it up for daycare, day camp kind of thing.
For sure. For sure. I would definitely like to stay local, just kind of everybody's trust to get back on. I think that's your safest approach.
Yeah, okay.
And I think the intent for the daycare, I don't want to say camp, because we're not going anywhere, is the necessity that the city will, the people need for the city. Like I told Frank, if we had other daycares in the city, it'd be null and void, because they could go there. There's really nowhere else for them to go, for them to get back to work. So this is only an idea to be prepared for if the county allows us to have the freedom to restriction. Now, they're saying you got to stay six feet apart, and we just can't do it. It's null and void. But if they open up and say, hey, because everything changes really quick sometimes, hey, we're all, you could do everything now. Granted, Boomers won't be open and that kind of stuff, but literally can start, and this can start, and then things start, and then we're like, uh-oh. So I just have to be prepared, but don't...
I, I'm prepared. I'm an organized person.
Yeah, but when he's, the verbiage on here is canceled. Cancelled means not...
Well, that's, yeah, that's where, you know, things, like you said, things change from day to day. You know, this is all brand new to us. We didn't, we didn't know how to prepare for it.
Yeah.
Obviously, I wasn't prepared, you know, how am I supposed to do this? I've never had to do this before.
No, no, and I would say be prepared, so not normal, but the way we can operate. If we can't operate in the box, then we can't. It's just, we're not going to put the city any liability, or the children, or yourselves. But if the county comes and says, we're back to normal by June 15th, and we already, now you got to try to make a day camp happen, now it's August.
I'm good with normal.
Yeah.
I'm good with that.
Yeah. But if, if they come out with these rules that are just really strict, we can't do it, we can't do it. And, you know, so I'm okay with not...
I'm in full agreement with you on that. That's why I said, you know, I'm not sure if things are going to change. I'm all the same. You know, I'm good with that. I'm a planner, I plan for, for long.
So one thing, Mr. Mayor and council, just, and, and, you know, we had a little sidebar before the meeting started to talk about it. And one of the things we've just got to look into, because it's not going to be a summer day camp, but childcare has whole licensing all separate to summer day camp. And so we just got to figure that out, how we temporarily, or what do we need to do?
You could still call it a camp, it just wouldn't be the same, like the mayor said, you just need, people just need to know you're not going anywhere. It's still a summer camp, because the city manager's right, there is a whole different licensing for daycare. But I, yeah, I didn't, I didn't realize that the, the cost of the, the hand sanitizer was going to be between nine and 13,000, and the other incident where they'd have to isolate people in their own restroom and, so...
That's quite shocking.
So, yeah, we, being prepared for it, and it sounds like you are, if, but it, but yeah, I don't, yeah, the word canceled is a little bit extreme. But we did talk about it last meeting, so I can see why you did come up, that came up, so...
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, the, the next recommendation and council is recommending that we put a pause on the funding of other, other post-employment benefits, or OPEB. That is our retiree medical benefits of $125,000. And let me explain that, because I think that could be a little misleading. We have a fund, okay? We have an OPEB trust fund that has, oh gosh, almost $2 million in this trust fund. And this trust fund is about 85% funded, okay? And so each and every year, we've been putting $125,000 into this trust fund. And so some cities have zero trust funds, some cities have a trust fund at maybe 30%. We're actually 85%. So pausing this one year is not going to affect anything. And again, it's that Band-Aid that I've talked about in the one-year look at. It will not, it does not affect any retirees and their medical benefits. This is just a trust fund that ultimately, once we get to 100%, then we won't affect the general fund anymore. We'll just pull money out of the trust fund to pay the benefits. And, and if that recommendation is approved, I'd like to go back to that one slide that I mentioned earlier, just to kind of remember that. Remember I mentioned that kind of where we're at now is the, there's a deficit in the current year of 378, and a surplus in the following year of 463, or about $100,000 surplus. If we take out that 125,000 OPEB, my also recommendation is to add back in, because the last meeting, when we talked about the SRO, we also talked about getting rid of the, the traffic deputy, right? And the traffic deputy is $210,000, and he's currently not in those numbers. So if we take out the OPEB, add in the, about $210,000, $215,000 for a traffic deputy, it'll, it'll flip this... it'll flip this $100,000 surplus to $100,000 deficit, okay? I think that's manageable, kind of where we're at, given, you know, we're estimating a lot of revenues right now. And we don't have that crystal ball really to say exactly what we're doing. So if we make that, that recommendation, we could add back in the traffic deputy, do a pause on that OPEB. It'll still show, at least from a forecast perspective, about $100,000 deficit. We'll come back in, in September and kind of see where we're at. So that is the, the final recommendation there. Then the last one, obviously, is if there's any other comments, questions, or concerns that the council wants to address in this, in this preliminary, we will take them. So at that point, I would be happy to answer any questions, Mr. Mayor.
Isn't this, the OPEB, isn't that like a few years ago when Larry's interim? That's when we put the million dollars in to get that fund so it would be overfunded so we would save money because then we, so I believe that's what we did with that, just when we had extra money, we put it in, a million dollars into that.
Well, slightly different. So that million dollars, so, so Ron Peck started this several years ago, putting the 125 in. What Larry did, which was a great move too, paid off a side fund on PERS. So PERS has a, the basic program of, say, two and a half at 55, right? So that's the basic pension plan, two and a half, 55. Then you have, it's called a side fund. And it's always described as, you know, if you had, if you remodeled your house and added a swimming pool to it, you added something new to your house, right? So in PERS's perspective, it was single highest year, it was military credits that you could add to pensions. It was, there was a myriad of things that you could add to it, and it created this side fund. Larry ended up paying that off, which was a great move, so that was like about a million bucks that was completely gone.
I thought it was this, okay. So we still have $2 million and like you said, it's not, that portion, portion is not going to affect anyone's benefits.
Correct, correct. Now, last meeting, we talked about the dates on this 12 months, March to March, that we were recommending back, that we go fiscal year, fiscal year.
Correct.
So it's not changed on here? So you're still recommending March to March?
Yeah, so last meeting, it wasn't a recommendation. I know it was a dialogue to the council.
Dialogue, yeah.
So, you know, so I wanted to provide more information to the council, which, you know, I sub, after the meeting, I did provide information to the council. So now I'm bringing it back, you know, for, for policy.
Anybody else have questions?
So we're not going to pay those people till June on this recommendation? Those step increases, that way you already earned?
Yeah, so as of March, March 17th, the local proclamation, that's, that's when it would stop. And it would reinstitute, you know, next March.
But this is open breathing documents, so September's next budget meeting, we can open it.
Correct. Yeah, correct. If, if things in March, you know, again, as I mentioned, the revenues are the best guess, right? If we get into, you know, so July 31st, I'll have the new sale, I'll have the real sales tax numbers in, I'll have the real TOT tax numbers in. If things are different in, in September, plus or minus, then we could adjust that. And quite frankly, we'll probably even come back, we will come back in mid-year, which would be even in January as well.
Well, in September, there are also maybe some federal money because they talked about another $3 trillion bailout for the, for the government. So if that came up, we could, the first allocation, we could make it back to the employees first and then go from there, whatever, backfill whatever else we needed to do.
And we could backfill those from fiscal year 2021, not hurting 20s, because 20's already been done and TOT's already been paid backfilled. So we're already caught up. So we'd be looking at how to keep 2021's pay steps going, not hurting 20s, because 20's already done deal and TOT was already paid.
It was paid, the first quarter was paid.
And now when we talk in June, July, we'll be talking about the next quarter.
Well, it's April, it'll be April, May, April will be, be pretty slim. May's going to be pretty slim. In June, who knows? So it's, yeah, those are the three months that we don't get that money until July 31st.
Correct.
And no one's getting increases in July?
Nobody's getting an increase, yeah.
So we're just doing half of March and April and May?
Correct. Well, for 12 months.
But we don't have to catch up on all of them at one time. If we have enough money to catch up like March and April's level, we could do that. You know, people that get their increase in March and April, if we have enough money down the road to bring them up and then half, maybe mid-year, maybe we could do.
Well, it's not catch up because we're not paying them to save. Because we already have the money, because we budgeted for it. We're just trying to save money.
Well, I mean, it's getting semantics. I mean, it's, we budgeted for it, yes. We also budgeted for the revenue and the revenue didn't come into play.
And that's why we, that's why we made changes to our travel plans and our training to, so, I mean, taking out of the people's work money, that's, I don't think that's where we should be cutting to save. We already did our budget for not traveling, not our expenses, all that stuff. Now we're taking it out of their checks. I understand merits. You did a good job, this pay raise, okay, we'll freeze those, but they work, they know in a year they're going to get this, and now we're taking it away. That, I don't think that's where we should be cutting our money to save is from people's pay. I mean, if it was one of us, we would be having a different conversation if we were in that boat with our employer. So I just don't think it's good business to take out of earned pay raises, not, I just, I mean, I understand the COLA, that can be here or there, but if they're earning this pay and it's already kind of set in stone, they're going to get it unless they don't earn it, then I get it. But I'm just trying to save some money out of people's pay when maybe they're a single parent now or their wife's not working because of this. I just don't, I just don't, I can't sleep at night knowing that we're stopping that kind of, we're saving money there where we could just, don't drive so many vehicles around, maybe save money on gas here and there.
So just to give you a perspective of it, the, so it's 77,000 in total. COLA is 41,000, step is 36,000.
So Steve, you're just proposing from March to June 31st, that those folks get theirs and then we freeze it from June 31st?
I'm good with.
June 30th, sorry.
Fiscal year 20 is kind of over, like they already earned it. Now, I understand freezing next 20 to 21, I got freezing. And then like it's open breathing documents, so September, we're back to normal and things are coming in, we can unfreeze it. It's not in stone 12 month, it's not canceled, it's postponed. So we can always come back. But right now, come July, June 31st, July 1st, you're not going to get your pay raise because we already told you months out, not you woke up one morning and found out you're not getting it. I just, just, I think it'll be.
Well, I, you know, I appreciate that and, you know, there's also cities laying hundreds of, thousands of people off and California is going to be one of them here pretty soon. But I understand your point. Frank, do you know what the figure would be just from the March to June 30th?
77.
Yeah, it's very minimal dollars. Yeah, it's, yeah, it's under $5,000.
Oh, okay.
So it's only a timing, and it's not even a savings issue, so it's only a timing.
No, it's, I, I'm, yeah. Well, then, then I would just like to amend that recommendation then to, to say we just, it starts July 1st and then we pay the, the rate, the, their pay steps till July 1st.
I like that because it's in the fiscal year, fiscal year.
June 30th, sorry, June 30th.
They should get their step increase.
And then we just go from there.
No merit increases, just step increases.
No merit, no COLA, just their, their step. Well, no, I guess they'd still, well, because did everybody get their COLA already for this year?
Well, it's every July.
July, okay, so that's, we can, okay, so still everything, they can, they get paid till June 30th and then July 1st, it's, everything's frozen. I'm good with that recommendation.
So for 12, 12 months?
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
And well, again, this is a breathing out document because we're not, we're just still just, we're just augment, reviewing the current budget because it's, we have our budget and we're just, we're just making adjustments to it. And September, we can make more adjustments if we get, if something really crazy happens with TOT and all of a sudden everybody comes back and they'd be able to pay it, so. Would you, would you, would you do a motion for the whole thing or just each one?
I would do a motion for that one. And then we already know about the, the daycare slash camp. But I would do it on that one.
What about the, the CARES Act Community Development Block?
Yeah, I would go, yeah.
Each one?
I'd go through each one of them and just to be, be clear.
Okay. So Cindy, do you have my, what I just said written down?
Yes.
Okay, then that's my, that's my motion.
And you said you recommend amending to freeze step increases beginning July 1st, 2020?
Yes.
Correct. For a year.
For one year.
With the stipulation if the.
We'll review.
I'm sorry.
Just so that we'll review.
With stipulation of reviewing in September.
Yes.
Yeah. So I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second?
Motion with.
Oh, I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Mintz and a second by Councilmember Bilderein.
And O'Gillvy?
Huh? Yeah, he can, if you want to put both of them down, they said at the same time.
Okay.
And then a roll call, please.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Councilmember Bilderein?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Gillvy?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Mintz?
Aye.
Mayor Klink?
Aye.
Approved five oh and number one.
Number two is the additional CARES Act Community Development Block grant allocation of 102,000 be allocated to the nonprofit food distribution applicants and replace in the general fund appropriation.
Did we already vote on this one?
On seven, there was.
So Randy's we did, so it's actually, not, not this one specifically. The prior one, it's, it's redundant, but we didn't vote on.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Wright.
And I'll second his motion.
And seconded by Councilmember Bilderein for item number two on, in eight. Roll call.
Councilmember O'Gillvy?
Aye.
Councilmember Mintz, Bilderein?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Mintz?
Aye.
Mayor Klink?
Aye.
Approved five oh.
Number three, modify the summer day camp given the COVID-19 restrictions and limitations of gatherings. Have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And just to be clear, Mr. Mayor, on that, because I know the discussion was, because I said modify, but suspend it, isn't it to suspend until, or postpone it until the CDC guidelines are removed?
Or lifted.
Modify if.
Okay, I'll modify my motion to, to that.
Motion by Mintz and seconded by.
So what's the motion?
To postpone until restrictions.
Staff is recommending postponing the summer day camp given the COVID restrictions until CDC relents on their current restrictions.
All right, so I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Mintz and seconded by Councilmember O'Gillvy.
No, I seconded it.
Oh, well. Councilmember Wright seconded it.
That's right. Oh.
Yeah, I'm getting hungry.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember O'Gillvy?
Aye.
Councilmember Bilderein?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Mintz?
Aye.
Mayor Klink?
Aye.
Approved five oh.
And number four, put a pause on funding for other post-employment benefits, OPEB of 125,000.
I make a motion.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Wright and seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Mintz. Roll call.
Councilmember Bilderein?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Gillvy?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Mintz?
Aye.
Mayor Klink?
Aye.
Approved five oh.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Randy. Thank you, Carrie. Appreciate you coming here and giving us all the info we needed. Okay, we'll go on to future council-initiated items.
I have a name, Mr. Mayor.
I'm good.
Councilmember Bilderein?
I'm good.
Okay, I'm good. Then we are, oh, by the way, Utah Trail, they were out putting up the polls. Yay! Thank goodness. About time. Okay, public comments. Let me put my glasses on for this one. Wait, here on top of my nose. This is the time for the public to address the city council on issues within the jurisdiction of the city council that are not on this agenda. All comments are to be directed to the city council and shall not consist of any personal attacks. Members of the public are expected to maintain a professional courteous decorum during their comments. There's a time limitation of three minutes per person. If you haven't already done so, please fill out name and address slips and give them to the city clerk. The city council is prohibited by state law from taking action or discussing items not included on the printed agenda. And now is the time to send in your emails to info@29palms.org if you would like to have public comments read. Public comments on specific agenda items are heard at the time that item on the agenda is considered. And do we have any coming in?
I currently have nothing, but can wait in the meeting.
We'll give, we'll give them about another 15, maybe 30 seconds.
Yeah. Yeah, I sense this is more than me.
Okay, we have none, so we go to the city manager update. If you do wish to, if you are at home and, and still want to do an email while the city manager gives his update, we will definitely take it after him as well.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I just have one item that, relating to COVID-19. So we had a conference call today with county public health in the county CEO's office. And so, tentatively anyway, not this Thursday, the 14th, but the following Thursday, the 21st, we will have a COVID-19 testing, drive-through testing facility or site here in 29 Palms. It will be at our high school. Again, that's all tentative at this point. We're going to have a, pending the school district signing the MOU, which have been communication with the superintendent and they are willing to cooperate with it. They have the same insurance company that the college has. So this Thursday is the college's COVID-19 drive-through. They're bringing the requirements down, you know, before, originally, anyway, it used to be you had to have, I think, all four, maybe three of the four symptoms to be able to get tested. Last time it's, or currently it's only one. And now they're going to go to, and actually the one in Joshua Tree this week is zero. You, if you just want to get tested, you can choose to get tested.
But you still have to have an, an appointment.
You still have to get an appointment.
Right.
So, so the one in 29 Palms, if everything goes smoothly and we can announce it by Friday, and that's what the goal is, to be able to announce it. So we'll work with Ms. Vieskas and, and other outreach sources to get the word out. So then Monday, Monday, next Monday, their booking agent, their reservation system will open so people can then go on and reserve that time. It'll be only 50 people at a time, so we need to have the queue of cars that can stack 50 cars at a time. Maximum, they can only do 650, that's the maximum. We don't anticipate really that it gets that high. The one in Joshua Tree, and we'll see this time anyway, but the last one in Joshua Tree, I think there was 65, they said, from 29 Palms. The governor's response plan is to try to get into rural disadvantaged communities so they have the access to get tested. And I know in speaking with Supervisor Rao, what her goal is for the Morongo Basin anyway is every other week. So, anyway, it'll be rotated in some form or fashion. We'll, we'll figure it out and we'll see what the attendance is here in 29 Palms. But just by way of example, if the Joshua Tree one this week is, you know, still a pretty high number and we dropped down pretty low, you know, probably that Joshua Tree one probably captured most of the folks out there. So anyway, we'll, we'll communicate that with the council. I don't know how long these testings are going to go on until, you know, that was one one of the questions for public health is what do we plan for? And they're, they're booking out to the end of June, I think it is, or the end of July through the summer. They're actually talking to the Bell Center right now because it's going to get hot.